...March 2nd. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could please have a few moments of silence for Jean Hall, the mother of Karen and Janie, and for Malcolm Jones. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hayes.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here. Presentations.
Well, we don't have an official presentation on the agenda this evening because this came about towards the end of Friday and the agenda was already posted. We've been fielding some calls from concerned citizens regarding the coronavirus. And I wanted to let the community know that the city of Avalon has actively been monitoring the situation. For the last four weeks, we've had weekly teleconferences with the CDC and LA County Public Health. We've been in contact with our entities in town, being together with them. And there's a great website which we have posted on the city's website. It's the cdc.gov. It has all kinds of great information in there, from how the disease is spread, symptoms, how they're trying to control it, from locations. And they're always continually updating this website. So it's a great source. And once again, it is on the city's website. I had asked, reached out and asked the Catalina Island Medical Center to come to this council meeting to give us an update on it. So we have Dr. Choi in the audience, and she is from UC Irvine as well as our Catalina Island Medical Center.
Come on up.
Welcome, Dr. Choi.
Hi. Can you hear me? Hi. Can you hear me? I normally give lectures looking at the audience, not the other way. So it's kind of awkward. I might just turn around time to time just to have eye contact so I know everyone's listening to me. I'm Hison. I'm an emergency attending physician at UC Irvine in Catalina Island. I know everyone's here really concerning about coronavirus as this popularity is getting really high these days. So hopefully, I can answer a few questions and give you a quick lecture why it got so popular and what this disease is and what we can do to prevent. So coronavirus looks like this, and this is not a new virus. This has been going on for a pretty long time. And the name Corona, it's from the protein spikes around the outside of the virus. It looks like crown. That's why it named coronavirus.
Ah.
There have been a lot of coronaviruses before. MERS, the Middle Eastern Respiratory Symptom, which came from, um, cam- cam- thank you. And also SARS, which is from CB-CAT. And we are not sure where this novel coronavirus is coming from at this time. Normally coronavirus resides within animal, and sometimes it will spill over. And how it happened, it varies. Sometimes it's just touching from the animal, sometimes eating from the animal. We are not sure yet. From the MERS, it likely people who had a contact with a camel tend to catch those virus. From the SARS, it was people who's eating that animal. We are not sure where novel coronavirus actually started spreading yet. So this is a good review that MERS has about 35% of mortality and SARS had about 14 to 15% mortality. And coronavirus so far is about 2.72%. To give you a little bit clearer idea, those numbers are slightly different between all the websites or between the age group or however they collect those data. But it's about, SARS has about 10% mortality. Ebola was about 40%. And swine flu has 0.02%. And coronavirus so far, as of February 13th, has a 2.3% mortality rate. So we all know that coronavirus is spreading pretty quickly, but this is not the most deadliest and most scary virus that is spreading quickly. We actually have a more scary virus around us that's probably the highest level of spreading. That's measles. And measles has been with us for 100, 100 years. We are able to contain and we don't go around to the hospital or school concerning about measles outbreak, right? So coronavirus, so measles all the way here for the contagious. Coronavirus so far is in the middle. This is up-to-date information as of today. Globally, about 83,000 confirmed cases. In China, about 78,000 confirmed cases. I don't know if you can see, United States, as of today, we have 100 confirmed cases with a 6 mortality rate and about 9 recovery rate. So of those 50 case, 100 cases, travel-related was about total of 17 cases. Person-to-person spread was about 35. And people who came from Wuhan had 3 patients. And people from the Diamond Princess cruise ship, about 45 cases. If you, do you guys all have a cellphone? Pull out your cellphone and take picture of this. I usually give lecture, interactive lecture and looking at everyone, so sorry, I'm ignoring this side.
Oh, that's kind of cool. It brings it right up.
Whoa.
Technology.
And that will, uh...
So it is there for everyone?
Everyone got that? Yeah, I can send it to you.
Okay. And that barcode will guide you to CDC website, and that will be the most up-to-date current information that you can get it from. So how do we get the coronavirus? Just like any influenza, it's through the droplet. So if someone coughs around you and do not cover their mouth, and you might get their spit on you, then you might get it. Or someone cough on their hand and touches any surface, and you touch it and not wash your hands, then you might get it, just like any influenza. Who's are at risk is the people who carry live animals or people who works at hospital, like me, who sees patients all the time, or people who has a comorbidity like diabetes, hypertension, COPD, congestive heart failure, pneumonia, any other disease that they already have. Symptoms vary from mild to severe. So people who's healthy, no comorbidity, you might have just mild symptom and you might never even know that you had coronavirus because it's just like any influenza. Might have fever, cough, shortness of breath, body ache, headache, nausea, vomiting, diarrhea. If you have a high-risk factor and you're not, you have, you're immunocompromised, then you might get pneumonia, kidney failure, and maybe death. There is no specific coronavirus kit yet. It's such a new virus. It happened, it started happening last year. We don't have a specific kit, but there is this kit that is going around that all the world is using. The specific city sensitivity is not that clear. However, if we will swipe the culture and will send that to LA County Public Health. Okay? Treatment, no specific treatment, just like any influenza. You take Tylenol, aspirin, Ibuprofen for the fever, body ache, drink lots of water, and stay home and rest. So this is directly from LA County Health Department. If you have any mild flulike symptom, the recommendation is you remain at home and stay home and feel better, just like any other flu symptoms. You can wear either mask if you're working at the hospital or you wash your hands very frequently. Take a picture of that barcode again, and you guys will have the most up-to-date how to treat the coronavirus or how to prevent. And I also know that a lot of people are worried about masks sold out everywhere. This is the mask that we usually give to a patient. This mask does not protect you from getting the virus. It usually, we usually give this mask to a patient so that they can stop spreading. In a hospital, we use this mask, which is different than this one. So there are different masks for different purposes. If you're healthy, doesn't have any symptoms, you don't have to wear this mask. Okay? Please don't go around and buy this mask because there are people who's working on a basement and they actually need this mask from protect themselves from dust or mold, and they can't buy this, and they have to work. If you don't have symptoms, you don't have to wear this, okay? And if you're not working at the hospital, you have no reason to wear this. So if you want to know more about this, this is WHO Introduction to Coronavirus. You can take picture of this as well. This is how to protect yourself against coronavirus. And this is CDC Situation Summary. This is most up-to-date, and they will update as soon as there is any more death or confirmed And this is LA County Health Department Health Alert Network. If you take picture, it will get you to the website, and you can subscribe, and they will send you text messages or email as soon as more update happens. These are all my references. Do you have any questions?
This will be put on the city website also.
Great. Are there questions out there? Council have questions?
I have a question.
Please come to the microphone. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Y'all heard on the news that it's a pandemic. Is it a measles pandemic? Same thing. Why in a cruise ship in Japan?
Wait, do you need him closer to the mic off that? Is that what you're saying? Yeah.
In that cruise ship in Japan, we heard that they embargoed it and they had all the patients quarantined. Why did it spread to all the passenger, or a lot of the passengers on the ship when they were prepared, just like you're telling us to be prepared, washing our hands and all that? How did so many people on the ship get the virus when they were even notified to do this? Is it traveling through the air decks? There's ducks, they're saying it's not airborne, but yet all these people got sick. How did that happen?
Thank you for asking question. So those cruise ship was one of the first cruise ship and first cases that happened. People are less prepared that time. And a lot of people, the symptoms does not appear after 14 days. Probably so that before they actually quarantined, they probably had the same coronavirus already. And people who doesn't have a symptom, it might have a spread. It does not go through the air vent. Usually droplet, unless somebody is coughing onto air droplet and you're right next to it and the fan comes towards you and you get it, it's less likely. But you're right, if they are in a contained space and if somebody touches surface and the surface has not been cleaned well and someone else touches it, they might get, catch it. And I don't believe that they had quarantined the person right away. The cruise ship was going around for many days before they quarantined. So they might have, it might have been a spread before they actually started quarantine.
But that many people? That many people? It seems like there's too many people to just randomly touch a hand over.
So the cruise ship is a very confined space, and they share food, they go to restaurant, restaurant, and they are in very small spaces together. It's not really wide open area, just like if you're riding public transportation on a subway or on a train, you're in a closed confined space for many days. So the spread will spread much quickly than if you're driving your own cars, if you're staying on your home and you're in a little bit bigger area.
Define combined.
Wait, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to go up to, because they're bugging me from the back, Jimmy. We need to hear your voice.
Could you define contained spaces? A cruise ship, you're saying it's contained, it's a dining room, it's a casino, but they all have separate rooms. Other than that, they're going down hallways and such.
So any building would be combined spaces. So right now, inside of this building where we are would be combined spaces.
This would be a combined space if it was this large.
This is not that large, I'm sorry. This is still a small places.
If Andy was a car, then it could spread in the whole room if Andy wasn't there. Sorry.
That's okay. If your droplets caught something.
If Andy was, the people who nearby would be more at higher risk than the far away.
Sorry, Ollie. Cindy, and I told you to move close, didn't I?
Yeah, I think I'm gonna go back to my original location.
So, and Denise, we've been in contact, stay here, doctor. Doctor, we, you've been in contact, spent communications with the cruise ships. So are they now taking temperatures of everybody that's getting on cruise ships?
They have strict protocols that they were instructed by the CDC to do, and they, it's like three pages worth of protocol.
Okay, okay. Any other questions? This is the big chance.
And on the CDC website, there's a one spot where you could click on to see about ships, too.
Good evening, everyone. I was just wondering, does the city have a plan if there is a coronavirus case on the island or via the cruise ship? Do we, have we put together a plan of action for that?
We, I think, I don't know, oh, the chief is here as well as the doctor, and so...
So we have a plan. If there is a possible suspected coronavirus inside of cruise ship, then that person is not to leave their cabin. They're gonna stay inside of cruise ship, and they were gonna, they're going to quarantine inside of cruise ship unless that person is a critical condition, like stop breathing or stopping heart or something life-saving procedure is needed. Otherwise, they will stay inside of cruise ship. If there is a positive coronavirus case suspected in Catalina Island, we do have an isolated room inside of a hospital, which also has its own bathroom so that person cannot get out of that room for however we think it's necessary to stay there.
And also, if a patient was suspected of that and our city fire and county paramedics have gone there, I could let chief talk a little bit more on that. If they suspected that and they have like a checklist thing, they're not gonna automatically just bring that person up to the hospital, depending on their, obviously, if they needed emergency care. But the isolation would be in the residence. You wouldn't want to expose further.
Yeah, and we also want to make sure that our first responders are safe as well. So if you can speak to that, chief.
Correct. Mike Krug, Avalon Fire Chief. The city manager had it spot on. There's not a lot of always and never's. It's gonna depend what the patient presents with when we get on scene. It could be, depending on the symptoms the patient had and the location they were at, that the best course of action would be to quarantine them where they're at and minimize exposure. It could be if the symptoms were more severe, we would transport to the hospital and use that isolation room. So, and we have a policy that's been put together, excuse me, that's filtered down from CDC through the county, through the county fire department, all the way to the city Avalon Fire Department. So we have a protocol, we have masks, we have all the stuff. And it's, in a sense, it's nothing new. We've gone through this before with SARS and a heavy flu season even. So we're very much prepared.
Excellent. Other questions? Mr. Lutjehan, do you have anything to add?
I'll just add that we have been sharing as we come into contact with it through US Travel or the CDC information in our Thursday update going out to all of our member businesses. And I would just add an umbrella comment because I know I'm doing it at home and at work, wiping down doorknobs, wiping down handrails outside of our office, keeping sanitizer handy on our desks. When someone comes in and shakes our hands, as soon as they leave the room, you quickly sanitize, you know, your hands if you can't get to a sink. So I think we can all be proactive in that regard and probably should be doing that anyway.
Right, okay, thank you. Any other questions? We want to thank you for coming. Hopefully, that will calm the nerves of some who are getting a little excited and a little nervous about this whole pandemic. Thank you so much for coming. I'm glad they sent you instead of Jason. Announcements and written communications?
I have no written communication, but I'll just do my little spiel right now, and that's on election update stuff. Last week, myself and staff attended an election training with the county registrar recorder's office. There's four very diligent community workers up there at the polls. God bless them, they've been there for, today is day three, tomorrow will be day four, and it's been long days for them. So we're very appreciative to those four workers from our community. I was very impressed with the county at the elections training. The county has done tremendous steps to ensure that every voter can vote. Literally, I think I'd reported last time, there's very few reasons for a provisional vote to be cast. And that being said, I know everybody's anxious for when we're gonna know who our winners are of our local election as well as nationally. And we got an update, Gabby and I did, from the county, and so I just wanted to let everybody know that by 8:30 tomorrow, and they're hoping to, as soon as the polls close at 8 o'clock, if they can, they're gonna release the count for our vote by mail to see, and you'll, that's sometimes a good indication. We have had a return of 369 vote by mails that have been returned to the county, and that was as of 1 o'clock this afternoon. The second report from the county will be by 9:15, and that will be from the vote centers that are on the mainland. And obviously, ours will still be on a boat getting over to the mainland. But every half hour after 9:15, there will be an update. And there will be two links on our city website. The first link is a live feed, so you can see what's taking place at the tally and vote counting centers. And the second link, it will be the election results, and you can observe that, you click on that link, and every half hour, there will be an update, all the way to sunrise on Wednesday morning. That's what it says, sunrise. And then after that, it will be every Tuesday and Friday by 4:00 PM, they'll be posting new results through the end of March. The LA County will certify those results, which gets sent off to the supervisors to approve at their first meeting in April. And we hope to swear in our new candidate, our new council members at the first meeting in April. That's our goal.
So we just stay status quo until that time?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, that's kind of a bummer. Okay. All righty, and next we will go to department head reports. Who's up first? Don't run.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Just some updates for March, some activities we have going in the community service department in the month of March. With the extra date we had in February, we'll start with that. We had a leapfrog down Front Street, Crescent Street, Saturday morning. We had 23 kids come out. Two of them were leap year babies. One a baby, one a baby, and then another gentleman, not so much a baby, but spending the birthday on the island. So a lot of fun. Wednesday night, this Wednesday night, here in council chambers, we're gonna have a community dog park meeting, 5:30. We've got some plans to put in a small space here in the next month, and so we want to talk about that, what that'll look like. We also have this Saturday, calling all green thumbs here on the council and out in the audience, our first planning for the community garden. It'll be Saturday morning, March 7th at 8 o'clock, so eight, probably about 10, 11 o'clock, so our first planning for that. And then a couple things coming up later in the month. Our kite festival will be March 14th at Joe Machado Field. We're gonna have kids fly kites from 11 to 1, and then adults from 1 to 3. The kids, kind of family time, and then from 1 to 3 adults. Pickleball tournament on the 21st, we're gonna try our first pickleball tournament. We're expecting to have 20 people or so for that, and put that out to a test. And then Jim may be speaking on, Jim will speak on the community cleanup day here in a little bit.
Great. Any questions at the council?
Thank you.
Be sure to tell Alison Osinski so she can bring out her super duper kites. Any other, any other staff coming up? Whoa, boy, this is a first. Okay, moving right along. City manager, do you have anything else to report? Okay. Councilmember report?
I have none.
I'm good.
We kind of didn't expect to have this meeting in a little bit of a way, so this is like, oh, boy, we don't have anything to say. This is great.
I'm good.
No? No? Steve? Okay. Oral communication, this is an opportunity for members of the community to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to three minutes, and no action will be taken.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Jim Lutjehan, Catalina Island Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau. I'm gonna tell you quickly about two things. One, which Dan just alluded to, we're having our spring community-wide cleanup day under the Care for Catalina banner, and that is slated for March 28th, beginning at 9:00 AM across the street in the park. And much like we've done before, we'll carve up into teams and go around and fill lots and lots of bags of trash. We're having a planning meeting for that on the 4th upstairs over US Bank in the back room at, oh, boy. 3:00 PM. 3:00 PM, thank you. And the community, anyone, whether you've participated before or not, you're welcome to come to both the planning meeting and/or the actual event. And we're hoping to continue to expand upon the ways that we are careful to divert things from the landfill as part of that day. Then you probably saw a lot of really physically fit, amazing athletes in our town the last three or four days, and I just wanted to give you a summary on O'Tlo. I got my pronunciation down now after three days with Swedes. There were in total 522 registered racers coming here from 23 nations. The nationalities included Russia, USA, Canada, Sweden, Mexico, France, United Kingdom, Australia, Germany, South Africa, Brazil, Ireland, Italy, Croatia, Spain, New Zealand, Australia, Switzerland, Denmark, Norway, Egypt, and within the USA but separate Puerto Rico.
Great.
Majority have never been to Catalina before. We did a quick microphone interview at the finish line and asked, and hands down, the majority had never been to the island before. 187 sprint racers stayed a minimum of two nights, Friday and Saturday. They had to be here Friday night for a briefing to race Saturday. And an easy guess is that they had like .5 per person in their visitor party, because often they were teams of two with one support person, so .5 for the team of two. And so that means there were a minimum of 600 guest nights from just the sprint racers alone.
Great.
There were 220 World Series racers who stayed a minimum of two nights as well. Their stay pattern was Saturday, Sunday. We saw many already on Friday, however, because they chose to come in early in order to enjoy other activities on the island or to attempt to walk the course. We had to deliver a lot of disappointing news to people at the visitor center. They couldn't get there on those pre-days as easily as they could during the race. Total guest nights for the racers is estimated at 1,300 nights. Sponsors, VIPs, and organization officials could have equated as many as 300 additional room nights, and we had many pop-up events from those that you may have seen, big groups in karaoke or what have you, hosting their delegations. The probable minimum income, am I completely out of time?
Okay, if that's your last one, then give it to us.
The probable minimum income generated at the 1,600 guest nights at $250 was $400,000, and certainly a lot of treasury expense beyond that. So I think... So I think money and time well spent, and we look forward to having them back in the future.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Yeah, they were interesting, wonderful group. That's just a regular cough.
I'm sure.
No one else. Okay. All righty. If there's nothing else, we will go to the consent calendar.
We have six items this evening on the consent calendar. The first one is minutes from the February 18th, 2020, regular meeting of the city council. Second one is warrants to approve the disbursement of $1,740,014.05, and that's from the period of February 10th through February 21st. Third item is to authorize the city manager to enter into negotiated contract with Jor Dole Construction for the Phase 1B Community ADA Ramp Project. Number four is to adopt two ordinances in regards to the deal. The first one is amending the Avalon Municipal Code, adding Chapter 18 to Title IX relating to the development impact fees. Two is amending the Avalon Municipal Code, adding Division 4 to Article 2, Chapter 7 of Title VI. Number five is to amend an existing transportation permit held by the Catalina Island Company to allow for transport of guests to service the Pavilion and Atwater Hotel. Number six is to adopt an ordinance amending Article 6 of Chapter 5 of Title IX of the Municipal Code to provide reasonable regulations for the development of the accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units.
Mayor?
Yes.
May I request that item five be pulled from the agenda so I can leave the room and abstain for a financial conflict of interest?
Okay, and if we could pull item six just for a question. So on items 1 through 4?
I'll make a motion to approve items number 1 through 4 on consent calendar.
Second?
Second.
Okay. It moved in second. Call for the vote.
All ayes. Do you want to do number six while I'm still here? Do you want to just do number six?
Let's do six, and then we'll kick her out of the room. Okay. My first, we'll quarantine her. So item number six, I just have a question. I know we discussed all of this, but help me, because somebody brought something to my attention. So if I, the, oh, thank you. So an accessory dwelling unit could be put on somebody who lives up on the hills, like let's say where Ole lives, or where Steve lives, or where Cindy lives, correct?
Yes. Any residential structure is eligible for an accessory dwelling unit or a junior accessory dwelling.
Okay. And the way we justify not having, allowing them to have a vehicle was because we have public transportation, we have family, we have friends, and that kind of thing, is that correct? Pretty much? Okay. Somebody said, well, you know, how are those people going to get down the hill? And that was kind of my answer, but I just wanted to make sure we were on the same page. That's all I had on that one. Oh, and I have another question. Can a homeowner's association ban them from building accessory dwelling units like that have happened up in, what is that, Sol Vista?
Sol Vista.
Not anymore.
Not anymore?
The statutes do not allow HOAs to prohibit the accessory dwelling units.
Okay.
And I think your question was about the vehicle code change, as far as vehicles?
Right.
Because I've been asked the same question. If somebody's able to provide off-street parking, could they have auto let for their junior accessory?
And the answer to that would be yes? Or the answer to that would be no?
We can talk about that about number seven.
That's the last item on general business.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry.
Strictly on the ADUs.
Okay. Oh, no, so did I. Okay, so item number six?
I'll make a motion to approve, adopt an ordinance.
My second.
Number six.
Moving second. Call for the vote.
All ayes.
I want to reopen. All clear.
Oh, can we just, we need to have, thank you very much. We need to have public comment just for a minute because Paul, the librarian, just walked into the room.
She was very kind. I don't think I've ever been there.
I'm sorry, is that okay?
But.
I'm sorry.
Paul Virchell, Avalon Library, you don't need to do that, but thank you. We are going to have Claudia Hindu coming on Saturday. She's going to do a class in watercolors. That's going to be very exciting. And then a week after that, I have Emmy Lam coming to do a class on Chinese calligraphy. So I've got a lot of art coming up this next month. Also, what else? I don't have much. I don't have anything prepared, but.
We didn't either today, so that's why the meeting's going to be short.
But I'm very, very excited about the month of March, and good luck to everybody. And thank you for all you guys do.
Thank you, Paul. Okay. Okay, item number, this is giving me a dirty look, I can tell.
No, I didn't know he had comments to the one you just voted on. That's why I was looking at you to see what you were talking about.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, item number five. Yes?
I have a question for the Island Company in regards to the Pavilion, because they have come before to get the transportation permit, and they were denied for the Pavilion. How are they going to unload passengers for the hotel?
At the Plaza, they were denied before, Michael, when they wanted to offload the passengers there at that little, where C.C. Gallagher's was and.
I just wanted to make sure that they weren't going to be doing that, and that it was going to go, okay.
It's in the Plaza.
But I just wanted to get a verification on that, because we had denied it because of that.
Yes, absolutely. We did.
Very important thing.
Okay, I'm sorry, Paul's very important thing.
This actually is super important. The library is a voting by mail site. If you have your ballots to drop off to vote by mail, you can bring them by the library all day tomorrow. We have the mailing ballot boxes set up, safer than the post office. We are a vote by mail site, so bring your ballots in, sealed and signed, but we'll be there till 7:00.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Okay. So did you want to make comment about the transportation permit first, or do you?
It's a consent calendar, so whatever you want to do, Mayor.
Well, so I have a question. What vehicle will that be that's going to be transporting people?
Roberto's in the audience, and he's the one that brought up the application.
And here he comes.
Good evening. Roberto Perico. The vehicle, we don't have the vehicles yet. We are planning to, to either purchase or lease two nine-passenger vehicles.
So there'll be two more vehicles on the, and so those will be permits taken off of something else?
We have current permits to have those vehicles circulation.
They're like ones that have been held in advance. So they've been, they had them before, they put them in, holding whatever Dudley's term is for it, and now they're bringing them back out. Are you doing both at the same time, Roberto, or just getting one and seeing how it goes?
We are still considering that. We might get one to begin with and get the second one right after, but we are still evaluating.
So the amendment to this transportation permit, because they already had the, with their permit, to go to all the various places, it's for hotel guests is what they're asking for, like the other hotels, to pick up and to drop off guests.
So when you pick them up and you're only, you're going to be taking them, so you will drop, where will you drop off your Atwater guests?
At the Tour Plaza.
In the Tour Plaza, and they'll walk across?
Correct.
The street?
So there will be like a focal point, like a meeting point.
Okay.
And when they're not being used, Roberto, where will they be stored?
They will be stored in Tour Plaza.
In the Tour Plaza? My concern was that in the summertime, the slots where the cabs already are is booked, because I know I have said, well, why can't we have some people with a golf cart just stop in there? They said, no, that's just for the shuttles, and because it's so packed. And I don't, I'm a little concerned about the impact of two more large vehicles pulling in there, but I mean, you've already got the permit, so I don't know. Could we start with one and see how it works, and then go to two? I mean, I guess it will work, but I know we're also going to be having this Zangray coming to us. They're going to be wanting a vehicle for their hotel as well, as of April or whatever. And so, and then so will the Metropole come forward, look at this. So I don't know.
We are sensitive to the traffic that's going on, especially at the Cabrillo Mall, and most likely, both vehicles won't be at the Cabrillo Mall at the same time. There will be one dropping off and one picking up, so always in the move.
So, so right now, you have the typically young people out there at the mall with the sign saying Atwater or Pavilion Lodge. That will stop, or are they going to park the van, go with their little sign, and then bring them back?
That's correct.
Okay. Are we, should we be leaving those vehicles unattended there while they're waiting for their guests for 20 or 30 minutes?
May not be unattended.
He's just saying they're going to go and they're going to put their sign up by where they get off the boat.
But they may not be the drivers of the vehicle.
Well, are they, are you, then the question is, are you going to have two people accommodating that van?
In summertime, for sure, we will have two people assisting with the guest arrival, just because the high level of traffic we get during the peak season or busy weekends. So will probably be one person holding the sign, another person assisting guests with the luggage, or escorting them to the vehicle.
So if everybody does that, if everybody does that, and how, okay, so somebody wants to come forward now and say, well, I want to pick up my passengers. The floodgates are now open for all of the hotels on the flats, pretty much. What's going to deter that from really creating a cluster at the mall, because everybody now will have, how do we approve this and deny people going forward? Or do we? I just wanted to think ahead a little bit.
I think the Island Company already has them, so we're not approving something new. We're just giving them what they have. That'd be the same as any other hotel that has one currently. We took it away. They're already theirs. Correct?
Correct.
They were used before?
Yes.
We have permits to.
You have permits for vehicles, but they weren't used for this function before. You've never had pickup from the Atwater and Pavilion with your vehicles, so this is a new use for the permits. No?
I don't know how long ago their permits were put in advance, but I know that they were able to pick up at the mall. The only thing that's changing is it's strictly, now we're asking for, or they're asking for the hotel guests.
And who were they picking up before if they weren't picking up a hotel guest?
Tours. Most likely it was tours.
Okay, so now you're not going to be doing tours while you already have, so now you have, what do you have that picks up people for your tours?
Pardon me?
How are you picking up people for your tours now?
At the moment, we are, this time of the year, we gather all the guests in the Tour Plaza.
So is it, Ole, is it just Dave Howell's tour business out there that picks up, or is the Island Company picking up too?
They pick up on the buses.
Oh, okay. So it will be adding to it because it will be adding to congestion at the mall?
Yes.
I'm just wondering what we're opening up. Mr. Miller, would you like to speak? Come to the microphone.
Are these oversized vehicles?
They're nine-passenger.
Meaning they're shorter than, they fit into the standard thing. Well, I'm equally concerned, because I've had over the years a hard time getting my own vehicle permit for the Metropole. Now everybody's getting two bus, not everybody, but they're getting now two buses, because they have permits that have been on ice for who knows how long, and how many permits do they have, and why should they be able to have that many permits when other people are waiting literally 25 and 30 years to get a permit? Shouldn't there be a callback of some of those excessive permits that they have? They brought over five brand-new Tahos two years ago, or whenever it was. It's just a constant thing, so it just doesn't seem fair. It seems like if I just want to get one, that you have no choice but to approve me for it, whether I have a permit or not, you know? Because otherwise, it's unfair competition. They can pick people up, but I can't. And I'm not against the Island Company in any way, shape, or form. I'm totally in favor of them trying to move forward with all the ideas they have, all the projects they want to do, and I'm not in any way fighting that. I'm just looking at the fairness aspect from my point of view. When I once had a vehicle over here, and I had to appear before the Traffic Commission every single year to prove out that I needed a vehicle, and I frankly got tired of doing that, and that's why I gave up my vehicle permit. This is more than 20 years ago, I'm sure, at this point in time. So anyway, I'm not trying to be a disturber of anything. I just want a sense of fairness out of the whole thing. Thank you.
Mayor, the commercial vehicles do go before the vehicle hearing, they get posted in the paper, so if anybody wanted to come to those meetings, that they could voice their opposition to it, and then our impartial judge that comes from the mainland hears it. There is a lump group of existing commercial permits that get posted in the paper, and those are the ones. And then any new ones that get added, they hear those cases on a one-by-one. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So how, when Greg had his, I don't know how that process took place, and maybe they've simplified it since then, and I'm sorry, Greg, that it was a bad process for you.
Carl?
Only comment I want to make is about the Zangray. The Zangray has been denied a vehicle permit. They don't even have a sidewalk to walk up there, and I think allowing hotels on the flats to have a vehicle to deliver their guests before going, allowing someone up on the hill that is in desperate need of a vehicle, they have a golf cart, and they can't even pick up the adequate amount of passengers and their luggage at the same time. So until, I think, I think this shows bias if you approve this and don't, and you just denied, what, six months ago or something, you denied Zangray. So I think the first step is let Zangray or someone like that get their, get a vehicle. I understand they have their permits, but like Greg said, they bank their permits all the time, so that's a big hill to climb.
Just as a reminder, when that transportation permit came before the council, the mayor was very adamant at that time, because she was concerned that there was no place for those vehicles to park and offload. So sometimes it's not comparing apple to apple, it's apple to oranges, too.
Yeah.
They are coming back. Did you say April, Mary Annie? I think they're supposed to be coming back to try again.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Rob.
Sorry, I'm Rob Lock with the Island Company. Just one more note. One of the reasons that we're attempting to and have had this permit in the past was clearly because we represent about 170 rooms in the flats. The level of occupancy that we share with the rest of our community is pretty significant. If anything, we're trying to reduce that crunch, that crush area at the mall and in our hotels. So this isn't just wanting to do this at the expense of somebody else. We're trying to help create a little bit more seamless transportation and integration of people and resources on the island to get from the mall to the hotels. So Roberto did a good job explaining the purpose for that, but there's also an underlying reason for that as well, not only for our own guests, but for, to help mitigate some of that crush area over at the mall.
Okay. Well, I, you know, and I understand now, they're still going to have people on the mall directing their people, and if everybody, if every hotel did that, if the Metropole started bringing somebody out there to tell them to, you know, to, you know, I'm going to Piper you to the Metropole, and then the Sea Crest Inn does it, and everybody else does it, you have all of these people out there with placards, which to me creates congestion. I mean, and it seems like it should be one thing, I mean, if you have the vehicles, then maybe not have the person standing in front of the bathrooms or right there so that it's not, you know, I don't know. I'm just, especially with all of the construction that's going on on the mall and the kind of the mess that we have there now, the quicker we can, you know, I don't know. I'm just having a little bit of a problem with this, I don't know why.
We are happy to work with the logistics with you in that regard. It's all, the purpose of this is, in our opinion, to enhance the experience of our guests coming to the island. And that means every guest in the island to, if part of what we're trying to do and trying to accomplish alleviates some congestion or other areas for other guests, that's our purpose. And we recognize that this, that also we're capable of bringing two vehicles together from a density of our business model, so we can afford to do that, where some others can't, if they have two, four, six rooms. We're trying We're trying to play within a mosaic of hotels and food and beverage venues that makes most sense for seamless transportation around the island. So that's our intention. If there's some methodology with sequencing of that that makes it a little bit easier, palatable for the council, we're all ears and we want to do this collaboratively.
So you drop them off in the plaza to go to the Atwater?
Yes.
Then you're going to walk them down in front of the Glenmore to use the crosswalk?
Or...
So they're not dumping nine passengers onto the street?
Well, that's the intention. We want to do, so to come across the Glenmore and whip around and do all of that Tetris game there causes more grief than would be...
Oh, with a vehicle.
With the Tour Plaza, right.
Yeah.
So we, clearly we'd love a drop-off area there regardless for any type of vehicle, so getting that curb in white mode versus red mode because it is a sense of arrival and sense of access to the hotel, but the intention there is the Tour Plaza.
Would it be, I'm not telling you how to do your business, but I don't like to think that we're carrying a bunch of luggage across, because I don't think people are going to walk all the way down to the Glenmore to use the crosswalk to then go back to get to your hotel.
Well, what's happening now, Mayor, as you know, is that we're escorting people by foot from the mall.
But off of Crescent?
Correct.
You're taking them off of Crescent, so you're not putting them in harm's way?
Correct.
Could you, is there a reason you couldn't pull them into the parking lot between you and the library?
Yeah, yes.
Is that, does that make more sense?
Yeah.
I mean, I just, from a safety standpoint, because that little, that summer gets very congested, but, and especially in the summertime and kid, people on bikes and everything else.
It's a good point and it would be one more step, but one less obstacle for pedestrian traffic. You're correct.
You wouldn't think of using one of your Suburbans to take them, so that, those are mighty big vehicles on our roads already. You don't think about using, and very, very, I will say, very irregularly filled with more than one person in your Suburbans, you wouldn't think to use those instead of having to purchase more vehicles?
The answer is no. Those are not that guest-friendly, so to speak.
Uh-huh.
You have to step over each other and the amount of luggage space in the back doesn't necessarily promote a good experience for our guests, so...
Well, one of the beauties of the Pavilion Lodge, but even now with the Atwater, its handicap accessibility, were you considering having one of those vehicles being handicap accessible?
I can look into that. We can look into that.
Okay. I don't know what your arrangement is. What's your arrangement now with the cabs? None? Do you have the arrangement that's...
Roberto, can you answer that question? Excuse me.
We do use our public transportation, the cab company, to transport guests back and forth to the mall whenever it's needed.
Okay, and the handicap one as well, is all of them right now?
Yes.
Okay, all righty, thank you. Okay.
One more question. What is the capacity of the vehicles that they're planning on using?
Nine passenger.
Nine passengers, okay. And roughly, how many people get off the boat? How many rooms at a certain time?
What, you said quite a few?
Quite a few. Because when I worked at Mount Ada and we had six rooms and all six rooms arrived at the same time, that's multiple trips to get them up and down. And we had a seven-seat van to do that, so these vehicles are going to be on the street quite, I have no problem with it. I just want to make sure that it's not impacting the community and like you said, at the mall. It just...
And again, I'm looking forward to, or not looking forward, but if I'm here to look forward to the fact that we're now going to get requests from other people and I don't know how, I don't know how we're going to deny them if they can, anyway, that's my concern. Okay, so Council, will you speak?
Let's make one comment. When, regards to what Carl said, if we approve this and we didn't approve Zangray, I wasn't here for the Zangray, so that wouldn't necessarily have been my decision to deny that.
Right.
And spending a few years in the business, the hotel business, I was always a great proponent of the baggage service.
Of what?
Especially the baggage service.
Oh, uh-huh.
Where people check their bags on the mall and walk to the hotel. It's a peaceful walk, it's a very pretty walk, you know? If I was stuck with a nine-passenger van, which is four rooms, and I know for a fact that the Pavilion gets significantly more than four rooms off the afternoon, the late morning boats, and I think it's just going to be, I think it's going to end up being a disservice because people wait. When we had Las Casitas, there we had a six-passenger van and we would get a few guys come in, but you know, there were multiple trips. And you have people standing around the mall waiting for it. I see people standing around the mall waiting for cabs all the time, too. And if I was thinking about this, I would look at an alternative way to get the luggage to the hotel because that's usually what the issue is. But you know, I understand they also have the bank permits and that being said...
Well, and it is interesting because people will be, and they have two vans up at the Holiday Inn and they'll be waiting for the vans and then if there's a miscommunication, they either start walking or they end up picking up a cab. And so that cab up to the Holiday Inn costs them 25 bucks because whoops, they missed the van. And when, if we're trying to encourage, your point is well-taken, only if you're trying to encourage people to walk on our beautiful island, that's something else. Okay, any comments? Other comments?
I have one more.
Okay.
Just as a person who did it for eighteen and a half years, if you're not there to pick them up and you're in between trips and they're waiting for you and it's hot, be prepared that when that vehicle does get there, they're going to be pissed and they're going to let you know it. So, and I understand you're trying to make it a better stay for the guest, but you had better make sure that that vehicle is there whenever that guest gets off that boat because they're going to expect it.
Yeah. Okay, well, Council? What's your pleasure?
Motion.
Well, I'll make a motion to deny. No, there's no second, that's fine, but, okay, it looks like a dice for lack of a second.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to an existing transportation permit to the Island Company to offer the transportation of guests to and from the heliport of Rio Mall and the Island Tour Plaza.
And let me ask, they're already doing to have a heliport with some vehicle, right? I'm sorry, are you already picking up people from the heliport somehow?
On a special request, yes.
On special request? Which, they're all special requests, I would think. Okay, there's motion, there's a second.
No second.
Okay, call for the vote.
One no, Mayor Marshall, two ayes, Councilmember Haves, Councilmember Olson, and one abstention, Councilmember Cassidy.
Perfect.
Haves might want to think about making it an on-request service so you don't have people waiting like Michael said.
Okay. Oh, you're going to go get Cindy for us?
It's dinner time, here.
What's that?
Okay, we're moving on to general business, so we have one item this evening is the introduction of an ordinance of the municipal code amending section four dash four, point one seven zero three of article seventeen of chapter four and title five, title four. This is an introduction of the ordinance amending the vehicle code relating to the ADUs. And Amanda's here, if you have questions. This was from Council Direction as well as Planning Commission, correct?
There was, as you know, this is our second time to adopt an ADU ordinance and the request the state that cannot require us to require off-street parking for ADUs. So the concern was that there's a lot of areas in town that they could see where having these ADUs there with extra vehicles could create some parking issues. So it was determined that in order to, because we have the honor and the privilege to control vehicles in Avalon, that we could amend our vehicle code to exclude accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units from being able to register an autowet. It does not mean that someone living in an ADU can't have a full-size vehicle because those are registered to people and not to places. But that was the intent of this code. I think Annie was asking about off-street parking, if there's, if we could provide off-street parking for it, did we want to allow it? The code does not have that exception as proposed. To where if they can provide off-street parking, should they feel it allowed?
Yeah, I'm wondering, is there merit in that at all?
Or is there an exception or something?
I think the first thing that comes to my mind that I'm not in favor of even allowing that is as we already see the congestion with parking and whatnot and the folks that do have off-street parking that don't use it. They use their garages for storage, they use their garages for play space, and I just think we're opening a can of worms if we even allow that.
Okay, yeah, just...
Someone asked me today, so that's why.
No, no, thank you. Okay. Is there a recommended action? Or further comment first? Okay.
Move to adopt an ordinance in the city of Avalon.
Comments from the audience?
That's what I'm asking, is there any? No, okay.
Now move to adopt an ordinance in the city of Avalon amending article six, title five, article six, chapter five of title nine of the Avalon Municipal Code to provide reasonable regulations for the development of ADUs and junior ADUs throughout the city of Avalon. One second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were...
Your second call for the vote.
All eyes.
Okay, I have a question. I didn't want to muddle it with that, but I have a question, Amanda. On the ADUs, is a building permit required?
Yes, ma'am.
And a water allocation is required also?
So far, yes.
Okay.
Well, let me clarify. There are ADUs where it's new square footage and it's, or a detached building, those are going to require allocation. There are ADUs where they call them converted ADUs, where you take an existing bedroom and space and create another dwelling unit. In that instance, Edison is not requiring additional water allocations because the bedroom already exists.
Okay.
So it's a maybe.
But you still need a building permit?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And we have a, there's also an application form that satisfies the planning approval process of it.
Okay.
Great. Okay, and item number seven?
Do we have the hospital board?
We voted. Yeah, that was just my question. We have the hospital board.
Now to the hospital.
Okay.
Hospital. I think we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's it, so we're going to, I don't think Tony's in bed at six o'clock, but Tony, good night and meeting adjourned.
Good night, Tony.